Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you all to the Oklahoma Department of Transportation public hearing for the Crosstown Boulevard. My name is Frank Victor Rossler III, and I'm the Public Involvement Officer for the Oklahoma Department of Transportation. Again, I'd like to welcome you all here for tonight's hearing. And I look forward to tonight's event. We have our consultant in-house to talk about the project and talk about the environmental assessment. We also have some introductory remarks by Brian Taylor with the Oklahoma Department of Transportation, Division 4, Division Engineer, as well as with Eric Winger with the City of Oklahoma City. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Brian Taylor for his opening remarks. Brian?
Good evening and welcome. I want to thank you for attending. This vital project to reconnect downtown Oklahoma City to the interstate's been a long time in the making. A lot of changes have occurred since this process was initiated back in 1995. The presentation tonight is a culmination of all the input from all the interested parties. The importance of this project led to many firsts for the Highway Department, that being the use of computer-generated visuals. Kind of to get an idea of the makeup of our attendance tonight, if you live in or near the project area, could you raise your hand? Thank you. If you work in or near the project area, could you raise your hand? Excellent. Business owners, and of course, everybody will be a business patron. We're pleased to present the overview of the progress, our alternatives, and most importantly, the preferred alternative for your review and comment. Our partners in this process include the City of Oklahoma City, our Master Consultant MacArthur, and the Federal Highway Administration. It's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Eric Winger, the Director of Public Works and City Engineer for the City of Oklahoma City. Eric?
Thank you, Brian. I think as we meet tonight, and I know that we've had a series of meetings over the past couple of years, the City of Oklahoma City appreciates your continued support of the process for the Oklahoma City Boulevard. There's been obviously a lot of information discussed over the past couple of years, and I think as we continue to grow as a city, and I think as patrons of downtown, you've continued to see that grow throughout this process. And there's been a number of questions raised. I hope that you'll find tonight, as a part of the presentation, that a lot of the comments that you have sent to the City of Oklahoma City, the comments that you've sent to the State Department of Transportation have been incorporated into some of the alternatives that you're going to see. You're also going to see that the city still has a preference, and that's for the alternative C that's being presented tonight, which is to build the Crosstown, the Oklahoma City Boulevard, again, for a variety of reasons, and we'll continue to reinforce those. For connectivity to downtown, to reconnect some of those lost connections when the Interstate 40 was located to the south, provide for continued development of our downtown area, provides for some walkable and very pedestrian-friendly facilities along the Boulevard, and to also support the city's MAPS-3 projects, the new Central Park, the new Convention Center, the transit, and other upcoming projects. And then again, the host of private development that's being announced and a lot of things that are in the future. So this Boulevard is extremely important to Oklahoma City, and again, we appreciate your support throughout the process. Some other things for consideration, I think, as you've heard me speak in the past, there have been some changes, and some of those things that I just want to be real particular about tonight, some of the things that I have heard through emails that maybe have come from several of you in the audience. Some of the connections either at Harvey and at Lee that were not shown as true intersections have been modified due to your comments. There have been some other changes as well to some of the walkability and some of the trail options that helped us further enhance the Western Avenue corridor near Klassen. You're going to continue to see those changes that were incorporated over a year ago also in the presentation tonight. So again, from the City of Oklahoma City, we appreciate your support and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Eric. Again, tonight's hearing is a formal hearing. We will have a presentation that will be given by Lisa Nungesser with Parsons Brinkerhoff. After tonight's presentation, we will then open the floor to public verbal comments. If you would like to leave a public verbal comment, please make sure and receive and fill out the public verbal comment form located at the front desk. When you fill this out, you'll be given a number, and once we enter the comment portion of tonight's hearing, then we will call your name, and we'll give a comment, and you'll have up to three minutes for each verbal comment. If you'd like to also leave a private verbal comment, we have a court reporter in the back to do just that. We also, for tonight, we have written comments. You can leave your comment in written form on the comment forms that we have with us this evening. We also, as a final option, you can leave your comment online by visiting our website at o-dot.org, where you'll find information about tonight's environmental assessment hearing, as well as other projects and public meetings that are being held throughout the state of Oklahoma. If you did not receive a handout, or a comment form, or some other information from tonight, I'd like you to please raise your hand so we can make sure and get that information to you as quickly as possible. The comment form, the written comment form that we have tonight is the best and absolute most effective way to get your comments to the Department of Transportation. This puts your comments into direct correlation with us and will be part of the record. At this time, before I turn it over to Ms. Nungesser, I'd like for you to observe, if you have a cellular phone or a mobile computing device, to please either power it off, mute it, or vibrate the device to keep from having too many distractions during the formal presentation. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Lisa Nungesser with Parsons Brinkerhoff. Lisa?
Good evening. It's nice to see everybody, and for those of you who are returning, we welcome you. Thank you for being with us over the process. For those new, I hope that you get all the information that you need about this project. The purpose of today's public hearing is to give you a project overview and to review the alternatives that we've considered in this environmental assessment. We want to talk also about how agencies and the public, you, have been involved and how you have had an impact on the project. Also, we want to talk to you then about comparing the alternatives and coming up with a recommendation on the preferred alternatives. We'll then have the opportunities for you to comment, and we will also tell you a bit about the next steps in the project. A little bit about the project background. Back in 2002, we finished up an environmental impact statement that looked at what was the appropriate thing to do in terms of relocating Interstate 40s south of downtown. And the result of that was that the Interstate was moved 2,200 feet south, but also it meant that about half of the entrance and exit ramps were lost to downtown. But the right-of-way for the old location of Interstate I-40 still existed, and the commitment at that time was made to create a six-lane Boulevard that would reestablish the access that was lost to downtown. But there's been so many changes from that point, so many good changes, that the City of Oklahoma City, ODOT, and Federal Highway Administration said, you know, maybe we should reconsider whether this Boulevard is still the best use for that right-of-way. And so the process by which this assessment is made is called an environmental assessment, and we're here tonight to talk to you about the results of that. First of all, if you looked at the document either online or on the table in the back, you'll notice it's not your typical environmental assessment. We didn't want to do a huge, thick, complicated, hard-to-understand, full-of-jargon document, and we hoped that we succeeded. We have detailed environmental studies to support the summary, but the summary findings in a way that is presented with plain language is the way we did this document, and it implements Federal Highway Administration's program called Everyday Counts. Part of that was to simplify the process and to be more engaging with the public by making the information more accessible. The environmental assessment process is one where, first of all, it's very clear that we need all of us to agree on what the purpose of the project is and what needs it's responding to. It is also then to develop an array of alternatives that would respond to the purpose and need, and then it's a way of comparing one to the other so that you can come up with a preferred alternative. So you've been involved, and we appreciate it in every step along the way. We've had meetings where we talked about the project purpose, we identified the alternatives. Your input has a direct impact on the project, and you'll see that we added and changed alternatives. And then tonight, we're here to tell you about the preferred alternative. The reason that you have a purpose and need statement is that we want to explain why public dollars are being spent, and what problems and opportunities the project is to address. And so the purpose and need is what actually creates the way for us to develop responsive alternatives, to evaluate them, and then to select the preferred one. And the purpose of this project, therefore, is to complete the I-40 Crosstown Expressway relocation in a way that makes sense with the EIS, and it makes sense with what's been happening in Oklahoma City. The needs for this actually are three. One is traffic has been backing up on the new I-40 Crosstown ramps, and that's a danger. Number two is, as we said, when we moved the Interstate about a half-mile south of its old location, a lot of access into and out of downtown was lost, and so the purpose is to reestablish that. And the other one is that there's been a whole shift in the way we look at pedestrian and bicycle movement and the need to accommodate them, and so that is the third need. So in the alternatives, what we're really focused on is the area that's between Western and EK Gaylord. And all the alternatives, all four alternatives, are the same on the east and the west because of engineering constraints. Alternative A was the one that was approved with the environmental impact statement back in 2002, and that is the one that is the six-lane Boulevard. But alternatives B, C, and D all resulted from agency and public input. Alternative A, as we said, was the six-lane Boulevard, and it took up most of the old right-of-way. It also had left-turn lanes that meant if you were pedestrian, you had a very long distance to cross, basically eight lanes to get across the street, which is not terribly pedestrian-friendly. It also had a 1,600-foot bridge. It basically would close a couple of streets, and it was the least desirable for bicycles and pedestrians. Alternative B then was, can we skinny the alternative down? So instead of having it the six-lane, what would happen if it were the four-lane? It would still have the 1,600-foot bridge. It also had a couple closures, but because the facility was narrowed, it allowed some of the old right-of-way to be used for pedestrian and bicycle use. And the median that was provided then would allow pedestrians to have a safe place when they're crossing the street, so it's also more pedestrian-friendly. Alternative C was actually the result of a lot of communication and input from the City of Oklahoma City. And basically, it was, the big point is, how quickly can we get the bridge on the west side down to be street level or at grade? So instead of having a 1,600-foot bridge, it's only 100 feet. So it's an enormous difference in terms of the structure. It also would have a variable median in some places, it would exist in others not. It also would be more desirable because of the fact that it's down at grade sooner. It would provide bicycle and pedestrian areas. It would also have areas for pedestrians for waiting, and it would also have a slower operational speed, all of which would make it more friendly for pedestrians and bicycles. It would also provide a connection up western to a shared multi-path. Alternative D was actually the very direct result of a number of comments that we got is, why don't we also look at what would happen if we could restore the street grid? And so the alternative D came up partway through the process. Alternative D grid would still use the east and west access points to and from the Interstate. It is desirable from a pedestrian-bicycle facility, but it adds no new capacity. It also does not provide any continuous separated bicycle and pedestrian facility. Now, one of the reasons we're doing this, obviously, is to provide for traffic operations today and in the future. And so when you're doing a traffic analysis, you give an intersection a grade, if you will, and the grades go from A to F, and not someone like school, A is the best and F is the worst. So what we want to avoid is to make this public investment in something that then is not going to function well into the future. And so as you can see from this chart, that the one with the very best operations for the future years is alternative C. And that alternative B, excuse me, alternative A, the six-lane facility, would be the second best in terms of having the fewest intersections that are operating at poor level of service. Construction costs, now, not surprisingly, the two that have the 1,600-foot bridge are the most expensive, A and B, and the one where we basically don't do anything different than what's there today is alternative D, the grid. And the one that's in-between is alternative C at about $40 million, $39.5 million. Now, the purpose of the environmental assessment is to look at the project's likely impacts on the built and natural environment. And so we're only focusing here today on the ones that are significant. In terms of noise, there were two facilities along the alternatives that would be affected by noise, that would be exceeding the standard that Federal Highway sets for its noise criteria. But ODOT also has a cost-effectiveness matrices or approach that says, for them to go to the expense of building a sound wall, there has to be a certain level met, and neither of these properties met that. So the negative impact of the noise is pretty minimal, and there will be nothing done to mitigate that. The other thing is that the geotechnical investigation suggested that on the alternatives during construction, hazardous material may be encountered, and if that is the case, ODOT has standards of practice that they would immediately put into place to keep the workers and the public safe. Now, the findings in terms of public safety and access for emergency services, so your ambulance, fire, police, D would have the worst because it would have the worst traffic congestion. So access for emergency vehicles would not be, it would be the worst of all four alternatives. C, with its best traffic conditions, would have the best public safety considerations. And importantly also, A, B, and C are the most compatible with the adopted plans of the City of Oklahoma City, as well as being compatible with the plans for the downtown Alternative D would have the worst air quality impacts, the same reason, because it has the worst traffic congestion. The facilities would offer different things in terms of bicycle and pedestrian accessibility. Alternative A would be the worst. Alternative B and C are the best, and because of the number of low-income and minority populations, they would actually benefit most from alternatives B and C. And alternative D is nice for pedestrians, but it provides no additional bicycle or pedestrian facilities, and bicycles would not have any separate traffic lanes in which to ride their bikes with alternative D. Energy during construction also difference. During energy, D would be the best because we're basically not doing project work much with alternative D, the grid, and alternative A would have the highest energy use. In terms of visual quality, alternative D would have no impact because it would be what's out there now. Alternative A and B would have mixed results. The bridge length could be seen as an intrusion, and therefore, it would be a negative impact on visual quality, but again, it would also improve the existing old abandoned right-of-ways, so it offsets it with an improvement. Alternative C brings the most improvement because it's got the smallest bridge of only 100 feet, and it, excuse me, and it has the, it improves I-40 and has the shortest bridge, so it has the most beneficial visual quality impact of all the alternatives. Now, none of the alternatives was seen to adversely affect the low-income and minority populations in any disproportionate way. It's one of the things that the federal government makes you look at and make sure that you're not disproportionately affecting low-income and minority neighborhoods. It does not, none of the alternatives also affect Parklands negatively, which is also a key consideration. It does not affect any of the important historic or cultural assets that are in the area, and that's another really key issue. And on a large-scale region, none of the alternatives would have a significant regional negative air quality impact. And so based on our environmental analysis, we have found there are no significant environmental impacts with the project. Now, we said along the way, I've said, you've been involved, we listened to you, you had an impact. I just want to go over that briefly. During our meeting in August, a year and a half ago, two and a half years ago, wow, one comment that we heard a lot was, please keep the Boulevard at grade to allow for economic development to the extent that you can. And so Oklahoma City came up with the alternative C, and it's been carried forward in the environmental assessment. Another was, please encourage walkability and use of bicycles. And again, the City of Oklahoma City looked at alternatives to add that. We looked at design alternatives so we could accommodate this desire on the alternatives. Another said, let's not have the Boulevard just be something that is a high-speed, high-capacity facility, let's slow it down. And so alternative B, we reduce the traffic lanes and we reduce the operating speed. A following meeting in December of 2012, we heard these comments. Please, again, get the Boulevard to grade as soon as we can. So alternative C, it's only 100 feet versus the 1,600 feet for A and B. Another was, can we establish or reestablish the city grid? And so alternative D was added as a result of that. So you can see, after months into the project, we listened to what you said, and alternative D was added and carried along throughout the whole process. And another was to say, we need better access into downtown, not so much through it. So trying to look at areas that we could reconsider, reconnect parts of the street together. Alternative C and D examined lower speeds with greater emphasis on reconnecting access. At our meeting in the summer, the idea was to restore the street grid, looking at parallel streets and allowing the former right-of-way to be allowed to be developed for economic purposes. So alternative D addressed this comment and was kept for further evaluations. Another was to say, can we look at a multimodal Boulevard? Let's not just focus on roadways, let's focus on the use of pedestrians and bicycles. So alternative C and D were actually refined to provide even better access to the core and to look at multimodal connections. And another was to avoid visible barriers and physical barriers. You know, we had the old Interstate where it was elevated and kind of created an area, and it was discontinuity. So we said, what can we do so there aren't these barriers? And so this is another area we looked at, the visual aesthetic quality as well as traffic operations. Our meeting in the summer, one was the comment, let's keep moving forward with D, and we have carried D throughout the whole environmental assessment. Another was provide multimodal corridor that's safer for pedestrians and bicycles and for people with disabilities, and alternative C and D have been refined to respond to that. And then there was a comment to please move forward with alternative C, and alternative C was modified with some improvements at both Chertel and Lee so that they would have full directional movement instead of partial directional movement. Other comments said, let's support mixed-use development and downtown revitalization. Both C and D are doing that for economic development. Alternative C balances both mobility and access needs. Another was to say, slow the traffic, provide greater access to downtown. Again, we have alternative C and D. And another comment was, don't disrupt the street grid. Alternative D does that, and alternative C was revised so that there is greater connectivity than on the prior alternative Cs. So we realized that when you evaluate how well a project responds to your needs, that your value systems are not the same. And so to try to come up with a waiting scheme that everybody can agree on, we said, we're just going to keep it simple. We're going to rate them, one is the best, excuse me, four is the best, one is the worst, and therefore, the highest score wins, and everything is weighted the same. If you choose to weight it differently, you are free as an individual simply to do that. I mean, we wouldn't tell you what's more important to you, but this is a simple way to convey the information to everybody, and there's not a complicated weighting system. But basically, we scored them on how well does the alternative respond, for example, to the purpose and need? How well does the alternative respond to the adopted plans for the City of Oklahoma City? What's the cost ramification? How do they stack up? And when you add them all together, you'll see that alternative C outperforms the other options, and therefore, alternative C best meets the project purpose and need, and it meets both ODOT and Oklahoma City engineering and design standards, and it minimizes the negative environmental impacts best of all. And so the recommended alternative C is the recommendation for the preferred alternative. So what happens next? We're going to collect public and agency feedback through December 1st. We're completing the environmental assessment. We're going to go forward and address the comments that you provide for us tonight formally, and we're going to submit the final environmental assessment along with a request that the Federal Highway Administration issue, something called a finding of no significant impacts. Frank?
Thank you very much, Linda. At this point in time, I'd like to open up the floor for public verbal comments. Through this process, we have our public verbal comment card that was filled out with a number that was given. I'd like to ask that those comment cards would be brought up to me so I can start calling some names. In the meantime, we'll go over the process again. In this situation, I will call your name as well as a number, and I would like, as I call your name and number, to step up to the microphone, restate your name, and then state your comment for us. You will have a total of maximum three minutes. Thank you. A maximum three-minute comment for each individual person, and after three minutes, the microphone will be turned off, and the next person will be asked to step up. These, let's see here, so I guess, let's, do, call or receive informs, with your comments. So with that, we have a timer and ready to go. So I'd like to first, Steve Mason, number one. And also, as I go through these, if you have a number, if you'd prepare yourself next in line to step up for comments, I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Steve Mason. I was president of Cardinal Engineering for 25 years. I've redeveloped and owned 20 historic buildings in the Plaza District and Automobile Alley. I am landlord to retailers, artists, small businesses, restaurants, and offices. I'm heavily invested in the small businesses of our community. I am chairman of the Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce Transportation Committee. I'm a member of the Automobile Alley Association, DEQ, Greater Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce, and Downtown Bid Boards. I'm also a member of the MAPS-3 Modern Streetcar Committee. I support alternative C. I speak on behalf of the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce and offer the Chamber 's support of alternative C. The preferred alternative C is an excellent choice and reduces traffic jams and backups in downtown. It improves vehicular access to downtown, especially during commute times and thunder games. It reflects a shorter bridge span at Western and reduces the lanes from six to four. I like the reduced construction price from $62 million to $39.5 million. It improves the accessibility to the western portions of the Boulevard, including Film Row. Instead of highway-style ramps at Chertel and Lee avenues, it provides full intersections. I like the trail on both sides for pedestrians and bicyclists. The proposed Boulevard provides excellent vehicular access to downtown while providing excellent access to the areas west of downtown. Alternative C will become increasingly more important as thousands of residents and office workers are added in the next decade to our urban core. I encourage ODOT to move expeditiously to complete design plans and to complete the project. I emphasize that the City of Oklahoma City, the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce, and I support alternative C. Thank you, ODOT, the Federal Highway Administration, to listening to the input from the City of Oklahoma City and our community during this long process.
Thank you. Number two, Tom Perim.
Hello? My name is Tom Perim. I am a citizen of Oklahoma City. I'm a geologist at one of the downtown energy companies. I applaud the committees involved for their flexibility up to this point. I want to speak specifically to two points. It's been widely publicized that the city and ODOT hope for speeds to be 25 miles per hour on the new Boulevard. However, the lane width of 11 feet is rather incompatible with this. I really want to strongly advocate for 10-foot lane width. 10-foot lane widths are completely acceptable according to Ashtoe Standards, Ashtoe Greenbook, at the 25 mile-per-hour speed limit. Basically, if you make an 11-foot lane, you're setting drivers up to fail your 25 mile-per-hour speed limit. People feel much safer. Secondly, the bike lane, as shown, really looks just being the edge of a highway, just because there's a bike lane. I'm a bicycle advocate sometimes. Just because there is a bike lane does not make it a safe-feeling bike lane that people will use. So a bike lane, that just wide expanse of pavement, is not necessarily welcoming to the citizenry. Shrinking those lanes, making the cars drive slower through that central part, where, again, where it's already the stated goal to have a 25 mile-per-hour speed limit, will make that bike lane feel safer, and a great new step to be done early in the process is to move the bike lane to a segregated position. move the bike lane to a segregated position on the opposite side of the parking lane. This is done in many cities. I just really want to advocate, when this is still on the drawing board, that the segregated bike lane is put in there. I think that the city leaders will be shocked by how many people, women, children, you know, not just the spandex crowd, how many people will use a bike lane that feels safe. And again, people that don't bike don't understand, simply putting a bike lane on the edge of a seven-lane expansive pavement does not make it a safe bicycling experience. So again, and to reiterate, I very strongly urge the designers of this boulevard to go for a 10-foot lane width, and also to consider segregated bike lines. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a number four. Lys Urban.
Hello. My name is Lys Urban, and I'm just a concerned citizen. And so to avoid me standing up here stuttering and stammering, I'm going to just read off my little sheet of paper here, if you all don't mind. The point I'd like to bring up is that I believe that the new boulevard should be designated as an I-40 business route and have the exits to it off of I-40 clearly marked. The idea is to get out-of-town folks off the main highway to come downtown and visit our various attractions. The more out-of-town money folks spend, the better. I want to emphasize the importance of having the boulevard clearly marked its entire length. It should have "I-40 Business" signs at each intersection, letting people know that they're still on the street that will eventually take them back to the main highway. I've gotten off on these business routes before and gone four or five blocks without seeing a sign, and I've wondered, well, am I still on the street that's going to take me back to the main highway, or I missed a turn, or what? So let's clearly mark it the entire length. Needless to say, there should be an ample number of signs on the boulevard directing people to the various attractions. Equally important, there should be plenty of signs on downtown streets directing people back to the boulevard after they ventured off of it to visit an attraction. Let's not be stingy with those street signs downtown, helping our out-of-town visitors find their way around. Finally, highway billboards placed all along I-40 should list the attractions on "I-40 Business" through downtown Oklahoma City. Place them as far east as Knoxville and as far west as Flagstaff every 200 or 300 miles. Imagine a carload of kids seeing those billboards for 1,000 miles and hollering, "Dad, Dad, we want to stop in Oklahoma City and go whitewater rafting." Okay, okay, I'll stop, if you all just hush. That's the type of thing we want to see. Use some of our hotel motel tax money to pay for the billboards. That's basically all I've got. Remember, the more out-of-town, out-of-state license plates we see on the boulevard, the better. Thank you.
Thank you. Number six, Derek Sparks.
Good evening. I'm Derek Sparks. I'm the Government Relations Manager at the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber, and you've heard from Steve Mason from our Board of Directors tonight, and don't want to be redundant, but I want to build upon what he had to say. The chamber is in its 125th year, and we represent over 5,000 companies in central Oklahoma, and we've been involved in this process since the very beginning, and wanted to strongly emphasize that our chamber does support the city's position and ODOT's position on alternate C, and believes that's the best compromised path forward, and we really want to publicly commend all of you on this great process, and certainly want to thank you for this meeting tonight. But we're going to take a formal position of support for that path forward, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 10, Steve Rope.
Good evening. My name is Steve Ralp. I'm with Zarca Water here in Oklahoma City. My plant is located at Third and South Chertel. I'm very concerned, as much as I appreciate what the city's doing, and I'm all for that, I have a concern with the intersections between Chertel and Lee. I employ 100 people plus. Closing down or making Chertel and Lee two ways where my truck stage between Lee and Chertel every morning and every afternoon, and we're talking 30 to 50 trucks, not to mention tractor-trailers that come north on Lee from Third Street, is absolutely gridlocked for me. I'm not sure this is, obviously going to be very detrimental to my business. Regardless, staging these trucks there, I don't know where to put them after that. I run a business, I have been there for 30 years, and with the old I-40 exiting at Walker, I need Lee to remain open or closed where it is now, where my trucks and my customers, those tractor-trailer rigs, which are 20-plus a week, there is no way they can come to my docks this way. So I'm very, very concerned about having an exit at Chertel, Lee, and Walker, where the last one was just at Walker. We've sent, as late as May, concerns to the DOT in regards to this, two different concerns, and hadn't heard anything back, and that's also been a very concern of mine. You want the reactions or our concerns, but not hearing anything back until these meetings. I find that very disconcerting, if you will. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, those are all the public verbal comment cards I have. Was anybody that filled out an online verbal comment card? Please raise your hand. Okay. Well, with that being said, I'd like to formally close tonight's public hearing. Thank you very much for your attendance tonight. Again, you can find this information on ODOT's website at odot.org, including information from tonight's meeting and the comment form, as well as other projects throughout the state of Oklahoma. Again, my name is Frank Rossler III, and thank you very much.